Meeting to order at seven o'clock. And at this time, we're going to ask Pastor Ted Kitchens to come. He's going to give the invocation and lead us in the pledge. Would you all stand please?
Counsel, I'm certain that there are times when you wonder if this is worth it. But on behalf of the community, we are very much aware of what you do and the spiritual community is very, very grateful for what you do. Father God, thank you for the finished work with Christ and thank you for the fact that you've established the whole idea of authority over community. And you've given our country this privilege of being able to organize so that the citizens are taken care of and good decisions are made, wise decisions are made, so that we can -- there's safety in our homes, to raise our children, enjoy our schools, and have a life that's the last thing we feel that way with the City Council in Willard Park area. So my prayer this evening is that as this council does after a long, hard day of work on their own, they also do the hard work of the community, the City Council here for us, that you would give them wisdom, insight, you'd make this night a little easier and a little faster than normal, and your good favor would be on all of these things you make. I pray this to the Lord Jesus.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Ted. Could we get the members of the Trinity Christian football team up please? Come on, stand up. If you believe it or not, I was your age once. That's not real talk.
New Brockon.
This is a proclamation honoring the Trinity Christian Academy. Whereas tonight we honor the Trinity Christian Academy Eagles varsity football team for winning the 2018 NCAA Division III State Championship. This team finished their season with an overall record of 11 wins, three losses, and district record of six wins and zero loss. This team exhibits not only outstanding athletic abilities but scholastic abilities also. This team has eight names for the academic All-State Team and eight players who earned $200 All-State honors. Their outstanding achievements provide examples for others to emulate and demonstrate the difference that hard work and teamwork can make. The City of Willard Park Council wishes to congratulate the TCA Eagles varsity football team on its most recent successful season and host Johann Strain's coaching staff on their accomplishments in this sport of football. Now therefore, I do, Mayor of the City of Willard, along with the Willard Park City Council, would hereby recognize Trinity Christian Academy varsity football team for achieving victory.
We have a proclamation honoring the Eagle Hospital Bearcats football team. Tonight we honor the Eagle Hospital Bearcats varsity football team for winning the 2018 Conference 5A Division II Texas State Championship. This team finished with a season with an overall record of 16 wins, no losses, and a state record of 86 consecutive district wins. I think I was there by 8:00. This team exhibits not only outstanding athletic abilities but scholastic abilities also. As 23 team members were named to the academic All-State Team and 41 were named to the academic All-District Team. Their outstanding achievements provide examples for others to emulate and demonstrate the difference that hard work and teamwork can make. Whereas the City of Willard Park Council wishes to congratulate the Eagle Bearcats varsity football team on its most recent successful season and Coach Steve Wood and his coaching staff on their accomplishments in the sport of football. Now therefore, I do, Mayor of the City of Willard, along with the Willard Park City Council, would hereby recognize the Eagle Hospital football team for achieving victory.
Appreciate y'all.
That's the fun part of this job.
Two state champions in one meeting.
Yeah.
It's almost like Brown one day.
Do we have any public comments?
No sir.
We need to see if we have a quorum, is that correct?
Yes sir.
Yes sir.
Alicia, you're up.
Yes sir. Councilmember Fennell is present, Councilmember Contreras is present, Councilmember Rennabon is present, Mayor Moss is present, Councilmember Young is present, Councilmember McCon is present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is to approve the City Council meeting minutes for January 8th and January 22nd, 2019. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes, thank you. Item number one, to consider and take action on accepting, reviewing, and appointing three members to the TIRS board. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the three members that submitted applications for the board and Councilmember Rennabon for the City Council to the TIRS.
Do we have those names?
Yes. Do you want them read?
Yes.
You have Barry Tatum, Michael Chandler, and Dr. Miller's first, Ron?
Ron Miller.
No, Ron Miller, I'm sorry, I don't have those in front of me.
Do we have a second?
I got Cory Tucker.
I apologize.
It's okay.
I didn't have those in front of me, yes.
Um, Barry Tatum.
Cory Tucker.
Cory Tucker, Barry Tatum, and Ron Miller.
Okay, thank you.
No. I move that we approve. Tatum, Dr. Miller, as our citizens at large, and Councilmember Rennabon as our council representative.
I think we got it right.
I don't know. It's okay.
And do we have a second?
I'll search.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number two, to consider and take action on all matters incident related to approving and authorizing the filing of an application for financial assistance for the Texas Water Development Board, including the adoption of a resolution pertaining thereto.
This is the, this is for the Fort Worth water supply, supply lines, pump stations, storage, all of the facilities related to that project. This is through the Texas Water Development Board Drinking Water State Devolving Fund. It's a low interest loan program for you guys. It's, their published rate right now is about 1.43 percent. We won't know exactly what the rate will be until they approve the application that you're considering the resolution for tonight, but it's, it's going to be in that neighborhood. It's really a good interest rate. It's 13.77 million, that, that covers all of the construction, the acquisition of property, maintenance, non-construction costs, engineering, financial advisors. This will, this resolution will become a part of the application for financial assistance that will be submitted to the board. They will consider that application, that should be completed and in to them by the end of this week, early next week. And then they will, they will review it and make a determination, and once it's approved, then they will issue a commitment for funding and we'll go to closing. This is, this is kind of the major step in getting the design of the system underway. And so that's, that's what you have before you tonight.
I want to just point out, there was a discrepancy in the packet that went out on Friday in the actual loan amount. The packet had an amount of 13,393,000. There was some orientation fees that Water Development Board adds onto that, loan origination fees, excuse me. So the, the final number will be 13,770,000. Of course, that's going to be split 5248 between Willard Park and Hudson Oaks, and that was already confirmed in the ILA.
And that, and it, the financial advisors, if you have a reading at it now, but that will need to be a 20-year or 30-year term. It hasn't been determined yet, or wish they're going to.
When do we hear back when we apply this? When do we hear back from the study?
It'll probably be about 30 days. We should, we should have approval in about 30 days. You guys have done the water line project that we did that was completed just about a year ago. That was the same program. So a lot of the documentation that's needed is the same documentation, so that'll speed up the process somewhat, but it, it should take about 30 days.
Okay, any other questions for Derek?
So we're assuming the full debt load for the 137.
The paper will be in our name, yes sir. But we have the agreement with Hudson Oaks.
Right, right.
Yeah, ILA, the way it's been reported, we're watering, they don't pay, we start to turn off the water.
Any other questions for Derek? Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept. I move that we approve and authorize the filing of the application to Texas Water Board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number three, to consider and take action on accepting and awarding a bid for drilling new water wells. Derek, take two.
This is the bid we took to build three new wells, Trinity Water Wells, the deeper wells, to help address the water issue that we had last summer. We expect approximately 100 gallons per minute per well, so we're looking at about an increase of 300, 300 gallons per minute or about 400,000 gallons per day through these three wells. The low bidder on the project was Irwin Waterwell Service. They've done, they've done some water health, well rehab, rehab projects for you guys in the recent past. Their bid was 486,347.58. That was, that was the cumulative bid for all three wells. Our budget on the project, or my estimate on the project was 600,000. We had an estimate, or we had a proposal on the wells prior to the taking the bids that was just under a million. The bids came in really good, we had four bidders. They were all within what you would expect, and so there was nothing unusual about the bids or the losses. Our recommendation is to award it to the water well for the 486,000.
Any other questions for Derek?
So we could get a discount for John's three wells.
You got some pretty good prices.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the award as read.
Do we have a second? Any other questions? Discussion?
These are Trinity well.
What's that?
They're approximately 750.
For all three?
Yes. And they're, one is at the well nine location, one is at the Foxson Elevated Tank location, and one is next to the water. We're going to try to get them started within two, three weeks.
All in favor? Thank you. Item number four, 2018 racial profiling reports as mandated by the state of Texas. Chief West.
Mayor and members of council, as state requirement and a criminal procedure that we present in 2018 racial profiling report, this report was applied to you, was basically of the 3,000 men and 53 stops. One stop did result in injury.
It's not a question, it's only a recommendation. I'd like to report, I just wish we could compare it to the actual city demographic.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you. Item number five, orderly report.
Okay, so this will cover first fiscal quarter, months October, November, December 2018, so just looking at three months of data, hopefully should be fairly straightforward. There's a few things I want to point out, which I'll look at. So obviously the first page you see there, you know, revenue expenses, and in, on the general water fund, there's a couple large items we're going to go through on some of the detail, just to kind of know what that is and what's causing the items there that make up those numbers. You see on our projects where that's tracking, the package plant is just a little bit left to spend out of that, I don't know if there's any invoices left to be paid there.
I think it's good on you.
There's a little bit left, but still to be done, we've got to remove the plant.
Yeah.
We're working on some other items.
That's getting low, and then the roads, obviously with the work. Just so you kind of have a feel for, you're at, on the general fund, just look at the detail, like I said, just a few of the things I was going to point out, as you see why some of the differences. You're having no tax on that, that top line item on the, on the detail, you can see we are down from last year.
Yeah, over the same period, but when we have the rates, we anticipate that just a timing difference as to when people paid, when we got the money, because based on the tax base, we should see that increase for the year. So I think that will recover January, February, most of the numbers coming in.
I think YTD, we brought in right at 1.3 at the end of January 31st. So most people paid their taxes December 31st.
You see sales tax were up about $60,000, so I know that's something we've really talked about a lot lately, the growth we've had in sales tax. Couple smaller items here, building permits are down a little bit, I know last year those were unusually high with some of the development and everything, you'll see on the impact fees on the water side, they're down from last year, you're still right on budget, I mean you're 23% on budget, so it's what we anticipated, but if you're looking year over year, that's, you know, the difference on that. On the next page, if you look down, right before the total revenue line item, there's a couple things on there that are kind of one-time items. So that bond proceeds, 373,072, that is money that came in for the police and fire radios and some equipment, has not been spent. So for accounting purposes, it's shown as coming in, it's going to go right, right out the door, hasn't gone out yet, so that's what you see for the quarter, we're up so much, well that money, you know, 373,000, that's earmarked for that expenditure. And then the other 256, that is money that we transferred in, we talked about this, I think at the last quarterly meeting, there were some other finer funds, money had been transferred out of the general fund several years ago, as we brought that money back in. Again, that's kind of an accounting entry, you see that money coming back in, it's kind of a, and it shows up in revenue, but it's not really something you'd want to anticipate, you know, going forward, just money moving into the general fund. The other thing I was going to point out on personnel, there's an extra pay period in there, so if you're looking at the increase on that, that's what's causing part of that to go up. So there wasn't anything on the other pages in terms of, of, on the general fund, some of the smaller items. I was just going to point out, if you look at the net profit or surplus for the period for the general fund, it's showing 741,000. Without those two items we talked about, you'd be up 112,000 for the quarter. So just to give you a little more feel, without those, operationally where we're at, we're up 222 last year, and I think the biggest difference is your property taxes, the timing on those, and some of the development fees and things that we mentioned. Just going to point out again, on the water fund, user charges were down just a hair, again, it's probably just seasonal, you know, you had a wet fall, so you didn't have people water as much, you know, it worked over November time period. Same thing personnel extra pay period in there. And then if you look on the next page, that has that capital outlay out there at the bottom, you're going to see, again, three larger items, you have the emergency water purchases, 21,000, and then the water, distribution of water production. So those are items that are related to the capital improvements of the wells, you know, whether it be drilling new wells or rehabbing the wells. So we had budgeted, coming into the year, 1,530,000 that was sitting in that text account, that the money was there, so you see it as it going out, we're at, we're at a deficit for the year, but that money had been sitting there earmarked for these funds. So that's, that's what's been spent on those, and obviously wars coming down for that. So without those items, you'd be up 271 for the quarter, just to kind of give you a feel year over year, you know, compared to last year, where you'd be up.
We'd be up.
We'd be up 271 for the quarter, if you took those one-time items out, we'd budgeted with the reserves to spend for that. Wastewater, you know, nothing really out of the ordinary there, you see user charges are up, about $30,000, so your, your overall net is up about 20, but nothing that would stick out, unless you guys have questions, any of this water. So you see just on cash, you know, we're still in a strong cash position operationally, you know, there wasn't anything out of the ordinary, obviously, some of the fluctuations are for the items that we talked, whether it be on the general fund, the larynx inflows or some down flows on the wastewater or on the water. That, the text star account I was talking about, under the waterfall, water fund is about halfway down, has a 1,155,000, $55,000 in there. That's what we're transferring money in to the operating company. So you're not seeing the money, from an accounting standpoint, you're not seeing it as income to that fund, because it's already, the money's already there, but that's what we're spending down on the, within the, for this year. Any questions on anything in the first few months?
Pretty good report.
Yeah, I mean, and again, it's looking strong, and within budget, and kind of what you're expecting exactly, yes sir.
With, with all funds, you're looking at probably what, 450, 460, between sewer water in general?
Yeah, yeah, you are, and like I said, there's, you kind of have to adjust for some things we talked about as well, that will flush out during the year. But yes, operationally, you can see as I, as I, if I took out those numbers, you're still up 112 on general, you're up 271.
271 on water, and you're up 84. 84.
84 in wastewater.
Yeah.
So you're still cash flow positive every time, which has been the trend the last couple of years really on all these.
Your water fund typically breaks even at best during this period.
Yes, but yeah, you're right, these are going to slow us months if you want to.
Any other questions? Thank you. Number six, public safety building update. Mr. Parker.
Captain, Mayor, Captain, Council, I want to hand out, there's some aerial photos that were taken today, fire thrown that he had, by the fire department. Shot at force, also here, update.
I've seen.
And give you a timeframe.
That's fine. Give one for.
What is it? Just printed out, just to say, you know, just to be green and be friendly, I did two, so one will be on one side, and the other on photo. And then you'll have a projection of timeframe for pace, and I'll, I give you that lookout, but don't, it's subject to weather, obviously, we have to comment whether things get pushed out, obviously, we were under the gun here when we started with rain days, but we were able to make up those days and still stay on, on task, or stay on course. Let me just read a brief explanation from some of the council members that possibly weren't here during this time. The new public safety building, we approximately 15,000 square foot metal building, and is designed to replace existing public facility. The project will consist of police and fire department administration areas, shared spaces for both departments, two drive-through apparatus space, fire station support functions that include sleeping rooms, kitchen, and a day room, space among others. The police station support functions include full locker room, secure evidence storage, and a drive-through solid board. Project designed again in April 2017 with Duryberry Architects. A construction contract was signed with Henson on a design, build, and development in July of 2018. Construction started last August of 2018, and the projected completion is going to be July of this year. So if we can just, and I may have sent my book up here, just to give you, if you've been by the public safety building, you see that there's still has already, there's one burden, which is a good thing. Our next three weeks that we're trying to secure is obviously erecting additional steel structures, our, our sheeting, metal in the building, and then also securing the roof for the insulation, so we can go ahead and do some interior framing. So you should see some additional progress by the end of this week, and you'll see this becoming more of a building, and so I'm excited about it. I know that there was a lot of work that was done back in August, and, you know, if you've ever been around construction, this is the time everybody thinks, hey, we're going so fast, so we kind of slow down, speed up, and then slow back down when we start doing interior stuff, but we are on task, so they are within their 11, 12 months to complete this project. Can say enough from the two chiefs that have been with us and definitely supporting us through this process. So I'll open up to any questions that you may have, but this is just a general update of where we are.
Looks great.
I like it, I'll see what's on the screen.
Thank you Bernie.
Thank you.
Item number seven, consider and take action on setting a date and time for the next council meeting.
We will have, most likely we are going to have a call meeting, another one, this one shouldn't be short and sweet, but Mayor Seltory, we are anticipating getting, receiving the actual contract from the City of Fort Worth on the water agreement. They had passed it two weeks ago, I believe, at their last council meeting, and so it takes them quite a while to paper the agreement. Obviously, we'll take a look at it as will Hudson Oaks, and we will come to you guys. When I get it in and send it to Pat, I'm going to probably say week out, we'll have a, we'll have a council meeting to adopt. And then Hudson Oaks, they need to meet the 21st or the 28th, do they meet on the third Thursday or the fourth Thursday? Anybody know? Fourth? So they'll meet on the 28th. I'm anticipating to have that contract to us by that day, and then we'll get it to Fort Worth for their adoption.
We don't know their next meeting, but our next council meeting will be, I'm going to have a calendar.
Next council meeting, the 12th.
March 12.
March 12.
Then spring break. Spring break. So I don't know.
So do we want to have a council meeting on spring break, the Monday of spring break? Okay, let me pull up the calendar real quick.
Do you think the call meeting?
Do you think the call meeting would be the week of the 25th, or if we moved up our regular to the 5th?
If we move up our regular to the 5th, I think, I'd feel very comfortable that we'll have everything, that we'll have everything.
That we won't be delaying anything by?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we'll, no, we won't be delaying at all.
Okay. That would be my proposal, is that we move our regular schedule, council meeting to March the 5th.
If, I agree, but if, if Fort Worth were to have something, today's the 12th, if they were have, to have something by the end of this week, and the first of next week, I don't want to wait till the 5th to do it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, well, let's, 5th?
Yes.
5th, March 5th?
Yes.
Eric, you in town? Okay, let's do it from March the 5th.
Do you have a motion?
I do have a motion.
Motion?
I make a motion that we move our regular scheduled council meeting to March the 5th, 7:00 PM.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That's all we have. Mayor's comments, I have none. Everyone have a great week. Mr. Grimes?
Couple things, the master park plan, Bernie was out with the engineers from Pacheco and Co. There will be a survey going into the water bills in February, it'll be a master park plan survey, and then we are going to have that survey up via Survey Monkey for around one month, four weeks to a month, however that shakes out. This is part of, I was asked to pass that note along, this is part of the master park plan process. At much insistency from Mayor Moss, we are going to be upgrading our audiovisual equipment here, which is to say we're going to have something in here, so that we will, we will have better things, better, better visualizations, I should say. Finally, sales tax came in, I think everybody saw the tweet that we put out, we are up from February of 18 to February of 19, just in that one month, 25,631, year to year, we're up either 25 or 30 percent. Our sales tax is very healthy and very strong, and as we moved out into the financial period, we received, I want to say roughly 97 percent, something like that, of our sales tax, of our property tax for the year. So the next quarterly report should continue the, the good news.
Anything else? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? There's no discussion. All in favor? Randy?